Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll talk about that.
About that.
Mm hmm.
I forgive me, Brandon.
No.
Uh, setting a meeting.
She says she because she gets tired of her rounds.
Okay, well.
And can you bring up the powerpoint when you get a chance, man?
Let's go ahead and call to order the um work session for the city council of Lafayette. When you get to order, relax, Lee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God. In the physical and the routine justice for all.
When that was created, what? Okay, roll the ball. Uh, Mayor Martin present, Council Carswell. Council Gilgan here. Council Paulson here. Council Coolen is excluded. And the others are vacant. Okay. Well, welcome tonight to um our budget committee also. Tonight's work session is mostly going to be facilitated by um Brandon. So we'll go ahead and do for a review of year to date of the FY two twenty three four budget and capital improvement program.
Thank you, Mayor. So um thanks again to everybody for meeting today. Um I think this was kind of the goal um.
Sorry, I apologize for a second. Do we have people on Zoom?
Um.
And do you get to see them?
No, because I'm in presentation mode.
Okay.
Can we hear them?
Yes, we do have JJ and uh Doreen on Zoom.
Are we able to at least hear them?
JJ and Doreen?
I can hear you.
Okay, we can hear you.
Great.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so I cannot see you guys, so in order to get my attention, you're gonna have to yell at me. Okay? Okay, sorry. Wait.
Thank you. So um once again, this uh is just a year to date. We um the ending date was gonna be Halloween um October thirty first, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty three. Um as that is the official end of the uh the first start of the year. So everything will be going over will be until the end of October. So keep in mind that thirty four percent of this year's budget would be, I mean, if we use up, if we use all hundred percent, thirty thirty three and a half, thirty four percent, thirty four percent will be um would be um charting to what it should be used because you break it down to a hundred, you divide it in the thirds. So um anything, anything we remaining um versus actuals of over sixty six percent, that would be uh very good. Because that would means we're either exceeding or um or not exceeding this year's budget. You'll see the percentages. So if we're like seventy eight percent, you know, we're we're charting very well compared to where we budgeted for.
Okay.
So and if there's any questions, uh please stop me. So this is a work session of the city council. There will be no real deliverables kind of really discussed, but we'll kind of get into some of the high level stuff after the presentation. If there's any questions, you want me to go into anything more, just stop me and I'll dig into that. All right, so the first thing you're gonna see is gonna just see where we're at for our general fund uh administration. Uh we're pretty, we're pretty good all across the board on that. Um capital outlay, you see there, personal services, materials and services, and then the actual um the actual charting up at about twenty percent more than where we um than where we should be. So um and you can see in the bottom of your uh the bottom of the presentation, but also um in the presentation packet in front of you. You can kind of see where we're at. The adopted by the governing body was one point five. Year to day, we're at about two fifteen, so we have about eighty six percent of our budget remaining. So. Um. Next, we go to planning. All right, next we go to planning, same thing. Um we have used our planner more than we'd like to this year, just because there's been some big projects going on, and some old B uh family uh public discussions going on and some activity along Bridge and the downtown corridor. So we're a little light in that, but we'll we'll try to monitor that as we go. Um we've already, I've already mentioned to the staff to redo some of those emails and phone calls to our contracted services, a great um rep on that at the con to kind of wait a little bit till we um uh get him involved in some of the items, just so we can make sure that we don't have to come to you for a budget adjustment. Um outside of that, uh material and services is good. Um overall.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh just keep refreshing my memory. Is that still in Jax?
Yes, Jim Jax, yes.
Thank you.
And ideally, I know what we spoke about the last council meeting with um, you know, taking over uh taking this away from Newburgh and kind of doing it ourselves, I think, long term. I think once Jasmine and that is all taken care of, we can really start learning to do this stuff internally. I think that can be a long term goal um for Jasmine or somebody else. I think we can probably hopefully pass that to us as that goes. I mean, that can be five, ten years out, but I think it's a doable goal with our growth and I think with the the ambition of our staff, so. Um so we're good on that. Um so we have about eighty percent of our budget left. After the third of year, next up is gonna be the building. Uh personal services is a little light, same thing with that. Uh we've had a lot of inspections. And our building uh expenditures are, a lot of that is gonna be through um inspections that are done, payments to Newburgh, et cetera. Am I missing anything else on that, Jim?
Uh well, just to clarify, on the personnel, that's actually just our staff.
Oh, okay, my mistake.
So this is part of our discussion. Do you want to cover that or you want me to? Um so the end of last fiscal year, we had to make a couple adjustments on the percentages of where staff was paid from within the fund, just to kind of even things out based on who was here, who wasn't. Um my mistake, some of those did not get corrected the beginning of this year for the first couple of months. And so that's why on like planning, personnel, building personnel, it's only showing like fifty four percent remaining. Those have been adjusted, and so they'll balance back out within a couple of months, and then we'll go back to normal. Um the planning services, the building official, the inspection that he was talking about, those actually come out of M and S.
Okay.
So what he said is true, we have been spending a little bit more for those services, but they're paid out of M and S, not.
So not out of that picture.
Just to understand, so employee A might have been allocated thirty percent from this budget, which is too much, so we compensate it down to like twenty and it'll leave it will out, right?
Yes.
As an example.
Yes, so public works there are a little bit more set to water, sewer, streets, parks. Um staff up here were spread out a bit more. Um um like when Kevin was here, he was budgeted out of municipal court along with me because he did some of the code enforcement stuff. He's not here, so now that's gonna kind of skew those numbers a bit.
Sure.
Um but yeah, so the end of last fiscal year, we made a couple adjustments on those percentages of which department within the general fund or funds they were coming out of just to balance things out. And I just did not catch that and reset them at the beginning of the year. So it's been caught now and fixed, and it'll all balance back out for the year. But that's why some of those just look a little off. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Jamie. Uh next up, Uni Court. Um. Everything looks pretty good here.
All right, can I just real quick, when you're talking about, you know, the building or the expenditures for the building?
Yes.
That was like the roof and stuff, correct?
No, 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 that is just how our building inspections, building, actual building department um.
Gotcha.
General fund task, yes.
Can I ask a question about that? Is it our, is that all our expense or does the city benefit at all from permits being um issued? Do they, do they reap any?
So we've actually discussed this. So um at the last council meeting, I let I let the the council know um that we're gonna be working moving forward to the state system. That state system requires us to set our own rates, et cetera. Um. We, to to put this nicely, we subsidize a lot of the development cost.
Okay.
Looking at what we pay Newburgh compared to what we're paying now, it's gonna be, I'm gonna be asking for a significant increase. We have to break even. Unfortunately, I mean, I I I got this the day yesterday. I haven't had a hard look at it, but just kind of going through it, we're definitely significantly down. Like I saw one, no, I goes up plumbing permit, Newburgh charged something in three dollars, and we charged like, I think, fifteen or something.
Mm hmm.
So it's significantly lower, which unfortunately, we have to recoup that cost, so the cost isn't staying internally. It's literally, we're taking the money and we're giving it away because we.
But you have to pay them, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so a long, a long term, I mean, hopefully in the next two, three years, we're gonna be doing that most of residential inspections and residential permits and probably do here, because Jasmine's going through the training. But um so we'll keep, we'll be able to keep that in-house and use that to those funds in-house. But when you, when you start this state system, you have to have an equitable rate.
Okay.
So we have to make sure that all of our rates are standard, um especially since we continue to go with the Newburg. I mean, so a general uh plumbing permit, I mean, look at, we subsidize eighty bucks.
And so having Jasmine on staff to do that will expedite getting the uh approval of the the permits quicker, because I know it's taking a long time.
That's the biggest goal. We're going through housing discussions with the county, and one of the biggest things was we don't have um we're relying on Newburgh because we have the twenty weeks, and we've already lost three permits this year because of that. The biggest thing I can do is how can we be ready to do that? And that's when Jasmine, I was like, do you want to do this? We can do that, and so it'll help everybody out. It'll
Right.
help the business community out, the development community, and it'll help everybody here today, but.
Okay, and it remind me of that timeline?
She started class, she did her first part, but she just passed it. She does her class. I think it's like six months, right? Starting in July? Yeah, it's gonna be like full type work. She's gonna be doing a lot of.
Probably almost a fiscal year away from implementing that.
Oh, yeah, we're probably, she'll probably be in class probably till next January, February. So I would, I would think twenty five, twenty six budget is when we'll probably, I'll probably ask for you know, some.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay. And there's two sides to this, so kind of along with what you were saying, years, like long, long, long time ago. The city basically just adopted the state's fee schedule for permits.
Right.
The state no longer allows that, and they're requiring that we transfer to this e permitting system that Brandon has talked to the council about. We have to implement that by the end of next year. January one, two thousand twenty five is the deadline. We don't have a choice.
Right.
And going with the state, there's no cost if we go on, if we piggyback on their system, so it's a benefit to the city to do that. But the first step is setting our own fee schedule, and so like Brandon was saying, we've been subsidizing and not necessarily for the the permit applicant, but Newburgh. Newburgh basically is lowering what they would normally charge.
Oh, okay.
For a permit based off of our fees. So in a sense, Newburgh is actually the one that's losing the money because they would normally charge, you know, a hundred dollars for a permit, we're charging fifty. So they're only getting the fifty, nobody's coming out ahead. They're actually losing, we're breaking even.
Okay.
Uh kind of how that works. So it's, and then, and so that will come up sooner with that e permitting and our fee schedule, that will be implemented. And then the second phase is Jasmine getting that.
Okay.
And so it's a big project.
Yeah.
Long overdue, though.
And then we will collect those fees as opposed to paying to Newburgh, right? Okay.
All right, Munich Court, like I had mentioned, um with hiring a new judge, he is significantly higher than our previous judge. Um so we may be looking for a budget amendment, but I do also think next year's uh budget projections, I think with the increase of uh tickets we've seen around town, I think that'll hopefully even out, just because we're seeing an increased court uh court caseload with the new judge and with uh the new deputies in town. So to give and take on that.
Your deputy had somebody stop to say, hold them to drive them.
He would, he would, I told him, I'll shout for you.
What I mean. Fortune.
Okay.
All the lights before I come here.
All right, police services, uh that's kind of where we're at. We're right at to where we should be for the year. Um like I mentioned in the past, uh my foresee is going up as we start planning for the next fiscal year and the fiscal years after that. Um I I definitely got some of the county union contracts and around the state, I definitely see a significant uh increase in that. So that's something Jamie and I will plan for as we come into the twenty four, twenty five budget season. Um.
Can I ask you a question about police? Does our code enforcement come out of this fund? Do we pay a code enforcement out of the the police services?
No, yeah.
No.
The 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 police services has just a police contract.
Okay.
There are certain things that we pay, like we have our property abatement funds out of there, right?
Yeah.
Property abatement, like there's things that we do that are like all the court things go through there, but in terms of actual, no.
Okay, so where does that funding come from for the code enforcement officer?
So similar to what Jimmy said earlier, there's there's different breakdowns of where they're at because of all the roles he does. So it'll all be out of the general fund.
All right.
So.
Just not, just not police. Police has no personnel, it's just the contract and then the miscellaneous type things related to.
Enforcement costs, so to speak.
Yeah, so like if we do a property abatement, um legal fees, if that were to happen, so.
Filings, that kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all we will do there.
But his salary comes out of the other department within general.
All right, on parks, uh we're looking real good on parks. Uh personal services, where we have, you know, we only seventeen percent, nineteen on materials and services and twenty one um total.
So.
Those are pretty big numbers. How are we so far under budget on parks?
Well, well, this, we're also in the middle of December, so you know, but at that time, we uh had not had the director yet. So at that time, um I think it started in October, right? The second week of October. So we had that cost there. Um we also budgeted out extra for overtime. Um and we have a little, you know, with a room there, but um as we've seen the past, what, two pay periods, there's been significant overtime, so it washes out based on emergencies and whatnot, so we'll continue to monitor it. Yeah, thank you.
And out of the parks one, is that where um our landscapers come out of too?
Yeah, we have on the parks, we have that material and services.
Okay.
Part of them, it's like with any of the right away work comes out of the street.
Okay.
Except if they got you for the fire department, the landscaper, okay, comes from the fire department. Portion, so there's a split out as well.
Right, yeah.
But yes, a good part of it does come from the parks.
Take it back, Jamie. All right. All right, fire. Um looking pretty good on fire. Um about to where we should be. Fire is always gonna be one of those departments that always is close you can to the, don't use as much as they can, just because I mean it's needed and it's one of the more expensive departments when it comes to materials and services. So those will always be, if there's ever, I have rarely seen a fire department really come significantly under budget, so I think they're at to where they should be. Um. So our general fund total, um we've only used about eleven percent of our general fund um as of October. There are some things on our revenues that we haven't received yet, a lot of them, like our franchise fee tax payments, um uh foreclosure payment, all those things gotta come in throughout the year, so our revenues will probably be uh probably the third quarter, they'll probably be even depending on the state and stuff.
Well, yeah, because like, like you mentioned, property taxes, the bulk of that comes in November, which is obviously reflected in here, so. And then there's a couple of the franchise fees that we get like a one time towards the end of the fiscal year, I think uh like PGE is a one chunk large payment, so some of those are later in the year.
So since it, you know, fluctuates, obviously, it's not take this and the that divide by three hundred and sixty five and those are the things, is this about where you were expecting it to be?
I was probably expecting a little bit more, especially with the transition and all the major projects we have going on. Um but.
You mean, you mean more spent?
Yes, yes, I thought we'd have more spent. I thought we would have a a greater chunk of our general fund used.
Okay.
Um but I mean, anything we can do to help cash carry forward and, you know, create a, create a bigger safety net is, you know, uh is what's best, so.
And some of that too is um because a lot of the ARBA projects are budgeted within the general fund, so some of those expenditure are a little inflated because we haven't paid out for those projects yet. So again, as we get later through the year, we're gonna see big chunks of those cut out, so.
Okay, yeah.
And there are certain ones, like um the next ones we're gonna be getting to are like the um the uh enterprise funds. There are some things on there that like we're dealing with the reservoir right now, and we've paid out SDCs, but we're gonna reimburse them from uh state grants, because we want to use the state grant first on that uh reservoir project, because it has an expiration date of twelve thirty one, twenty twenty four. So um.
Need batteries or do we just?
See. If we.
You just wanted to get to that top, the issue.
All right, I'll skip over that one. Well, um waterfront, uh so waterfront revenues um and expenditures. So everybody should know, uh there was a a water rate.
Where it's getting so.
Oh.
Yeah.
There we go. Perfect. Um so sewer uh seventy three percent of our revenues have been brought in, or twenty seven percent. A lot of that bill collections and whatnot will come in as we go. Uh the expenditures about aligned where we want to be the middle two. We've been spending more materials and services this year just because as we found out, we've had issues on the wastewater plant with um when we had Mark here, there's some things that we're working on to try to um increase efficiencies and that. I see that probably being the one area of the sewer fund that's probably gonna be right there this year, just because we're still playing catch up on a lot of the things. So um but we still have, you know, seventy three percent, so we're a little, in terms of the whole uh area, we're at seventy three percent on that. Yeah, I need it. Yeah, I got it.
So how, how do, you know, when you look at personnel services, we had Chad start in October. So is that gonna fluctuate, you know, are we tracking to absorb?
I'm not too worried about that because ideally, I haven't replaced the lower level position I was gonna bring in to replace Kevin. I was going to get to that after the holiday, and with the water rate uh issue that happened, I felt that maybe we could take a like a two or three month hit on labor at least, because some of it might have come out of water, just to kind of be a little more conservative on that this year. But as soon as the calendar turns, we've already talked about that replacement and what that's gonna look like. But obviously, the costs are gonna be nowhere near to paying an executive, because that executive position was replaced with Chad coming on board and with Kevin. So it won't, like I've mentioned million times, it won't be an executive, so.
Cause some of Kevin's workload was.
Yeah, he was made out of water and stuff. So we just want to make sure we can try to make that, I want to make sure the waterfront completely this year, we don't have to ask for any additional, you know, money or anything. I want to make sure that what we did, we're good with, so. Once you bring it back to what I was gonna say a minute ago, um everybody should know, we had a water rate uh concern come up after the water rates were approved as part of the budget process. Um we scaled those back to last year's water uh water rates, and we included um two surcharges, one of the uh McMenville uh water light debt, and then also um rainy day contingency service maintenance uh surcharge for the system. And so the revenue projections were scaled back, so um it's gonna be very tight in this fund this year. But I feel very confident, and I don't know, you can speak to me too, but I I think we're gonna be okay. We're not gonna have to worry about any uh coming to you for additional money or or running right on that. And I think we're pretty good on that outside of.
It will be closely monitored, but I think we're trending, but we'll, we'll be okay.
Yeah, so. Right.
We'll be digging the underground swimming pool that we were not.
But.
What year exactly?
Wondered that, did that. All right, uh Sri, the special revenue fund, it all comes through state gas tax and everything. Uh we have, I got an employee and a half out of it. We're uh doing pretty good on that. We're about twenty percent over in terms of the projection, or under projection, sorry. Um simply the expenditures are about eighty five percent across the board. We're looking really good in the uh the state street fund. Um all of our SDCs are gonna be on the next slide. That's just kind of a snapshot instead of breaking it down. I mean, there's minimal use so far this year on SDCs. Um you see there sewer, water, street and parks. The only significant change has been out of the water. Um sewer, we're gonna see in water additionally as we get those meters in and the reservoir uh being built out, we'll see some of those um capital improvement items kind of come off, and those will uh even out as we get towards the end of the year. Did you have anything on that? Yay. And then the last part of the presentation, and um there's also some copies made, because I know it's kind of small. Uh but we have the capital improvement program, just kind of want to get some updates where we're at. Um there's a couple extra ones tomorrow.
I want to see one.
Um green is is completed, yellow is in progress, and red has been halted or um.
Not that I can read this much better, any?
So just some updates, um those ones in yellow, uh the water meters have been ordered. I think we're just waiting on the notes, correct?
Correct, uh just a contact from the supplier. He said hopefully within the next few weeks, we should have a ship date, so we didn't know.
So we'll know in two weeks what the date is.
Definitely, maybe, you know.
Hopefully.
Okay, yeah.
So I think that was the goal. I think when we originally talked about it last year, I think we said maybe eighteen months out, maybe it'll be the net, but it looks like we're hopefully have them in before the end of the fiscal year, so hopefully the supply chain issues that we've encountered um have kind of been abated. Reservoir construction bids approved at the November city council meeting. We actually just had our first pre-construction meeting today. Um and they're looking to kick that off um in mid-January. So we'll have that hopefully before the end of the year, we'll at least have a grander update on that. That probably won't be done until the end of twenty twenty four. Uh we did on manhole ceiling, but uh item number four, we did complete eight. Um and we did ask for fifty thousand, uh but we only used, I think, about nineteen thousand, correct, on that? So we're actually looking at doing some higher priority manholes as well, since we have that money there, so one thing we can.
I'm sorry, you got ahead of me. Where, where are you?
Yeah, where are we at?
On number four, on the CIP, I, so I'm I'm reading off the notes off of this right here.
Number five.
You mean five?
Number four is.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, that was a mistake. Okay, wrong.
My mistake. So five, um on five, the manhole ceiling, we asked for fifty, we got eight done for about nineteen, so we, since we still have a little bit extra money. Uh Chad is gonna be going through, looking at getting additional manholes there. Um while we do have a little bit extra funding, um so we can have some uh knock some of those out, because normally we stagger them for three to five years, right? Are those clean outs?
Uh yeah, so what happened was actually off historically using these guys to sell manholes. Going off their previous bids, they actually became in part cheaper because they were in the area. They're working out of Washington, so they were getting Sherwood at the same time, so it allowed us to.
Piggyback on.
So maybe this is substantial discount, because it wasn't a special trip.
Great, so.
Brandon, can we back up? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
All right, to four, it's the pedestrian crossing on Bridge Street. I don't even remember talking about that during the budget meeting, but where's that gonna go?
So um we, it was um transformed from last year, and there was some discussion on it. Uh. No, um.
Ninety nine.
Bridge and ninety nine. Um it was.
Like mirror is the one that's down on this end on down, right?
Yeah, and that um so it's, we have a budget for thirty five. The cost overrun is about eighteen thousand more, so it's about fifty three thousand. I've applied for one grant, I got declined because it didn't meet um T-Mobile community grant specifications, but I did apply some money with USDOP.
Okay.
It's like a twelve million dollar grant max, and I was like, it's, it's, give me fifty three thousand dollars. So hopefully we'll see what happens, um but that project was still carried over to the, I think that was kind of one of those deliverables that kind of came out of the ninety nine redo, putting that accessible pedestrian crossing over there.
They're gonna put it on ninety nine, or they're putting it on Bridge?
The cross ninety nine.
Yes.
So ODOT will not cover that? Isn't that an ODOT, is it ninety nine, Owen, by ODOT?
We have the right of way. But that's not what, that's one thing that we want to do to improve accessibility with the sidewalks that had started before I got on here, so making ninety nine.
It wasn't in their preview of what they felt needed to go in.
Oh.
That was, that was all the discussion when they did that. When they did the, when they did the repaving, everybody remembers that in air traffic.
Yeah.
That was a huge discussion and ODOT would not do it.
Yeah. Gosh.
So um hopefully, um I talked before and about it, I think about a week and a half ago, um so we're still on board for that. Um.
I am, but, sorry. Um you mentioned that you guys had some money left over from sealing the manholes.
Yes.
And you have enough to do a couple of high priority ones, though, the ones where.
Well, I mean, additional high priority ones, like the ones that we're gonna ask for next year to be a part of it, so since we have the extra money, we'll we'll try to get those this year if we can. If the mobilization fee is gonna be worth it for us.
They're like the new high priority to the other.
Yeah, yeah, because other ones, also other ones on the stagger.
Next highest priority.
Okay. So there's that, um city hall, um number ten, the roofwork was done uh about a month ago. Um we just finished some of the uh ceiling tiles, Chad's, Kina's, a few more we gotta do. Then next up, we're gonna do, we're gonna probably paint.
Yeah, they have to match with a green color that will actually.
So with the paint, you're not gonna go with like the Lafayette green, right?
But then.
Open up like Lafayette purple.
This color, it looks so great on this wall.
So hopefully um
If they go hard.
We should be okay. There was a little bit of additional overrun on the roof, because some of the membrane, when they took the shingles off, was rotting. So I think it kind of came out closer to, I think, thirty thousand dollars on that, right?
Yes, it was. Split into invoices and then trying to.
Yeah, I think it was like thirty thousand dollars, so we we should be able to make everything work for paint and then the carpet before the end of the year. Um so that's that on that. On the completed ones, obviously, you see the cyber security contract, fire rescue vehicle, the public works vehicle, uh commercial mowers. Um and then lastly, the red, uh the water, the water main extension, it came in much more than seventy thousand dollars. So um I wanna say four or five months ago, I asked the council if this was still a priority for dead ending an area which only served, I think, four or five resorts over there, right? And that water main over there. So um we decided to hold off on that project because the cost of it wasn't worth the um, the equitable content of what we're gonna pay wasn't uh there at the moment, so it's still a part of the capital improvement plan, but that may be one we can look at doing something later on down the line, since it is a lower priority. since it is a lower priority on the water master plan. So, um.
I like seeing some green on here.
Oh, I mean, I mean, I mean, that's really good. I mean, we knocked a lot of those out super quick. I mean, the yellow number one's gonna be done.
We have possession of our new fire vehicle now too, right?
Yeah, yeah, um uh former chief attorney picked it up about two weeks ago, so um it's gonna, it's gonna be logoed and stuff, and we'll have it ready soon. Um SCADA, and I know Chad has a couple of updates, but I think on SCADA, can you update us on SCADA or with that? And then the wastewater facilities plant, and then the headworks that you mentioned.
Yeah, so so SCADA itself is uh almost done for the year. Uh we're working right now. Sewer's pretty much done. We just did some updates of we uh on that, but the sewer is pretty much done for the year. Water is getting its final update, which will be um automation of chlorine and soda ash dosing. Well, currently, we have to do it manually every day, and it has no kind of metering. It's us physically going up there and doing it. Now it will trend, and so we'll end up using less chlorine and less soda ash.
It's like going to change.
Uh that's gonna be done soon. It's actually, they're gonna work on it.
Is that going to ta-change the taste? I mean, make it less tasty?
Oh, so the taste is gonna remain the same, um.
Well, depending on who tastes it, right?
So unfortunately, the city doesn't have a filtration system. So the water is clean and good to go, but you do have minerals in water and stuff that already affect the taste.
Yes.
And as well as the city at some point, this budget to put a filtration system in.
So you can filter like molars, right?
Is that an option?
It is, but it's significant patterns. It depends how much you wanna spend.
Yeah.
And then the update has to be.
Yeah.
You can do both, okay?
Yeah.
That'd be interesting.
I mean, how much should I change?
At least a million to two million.
Just to start, right?
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
Um so then, on so that's the wastewater facility, I'll have to check that, just wait till SCADA.
Just let you know, we had an overflow uh a few weeks, a few weekends ago. Um having the on-call person being able to access SCADA, especially the past few weekends, we save a signa-saved a significant amount of money co-compared to overtime. Cause one employee would have to come in, I think, like, what, it was twenty times. So literally, they're in a house, able to do it, so.
Forget the, I mean, and on top of that, the non-cost aspect of saving, you know, the.
And also an upgrade that we did in SCADA, I have them put in a storm mode. So historically speaking, we would have violated all weekend last weekend, uh because of the high flow. Um so like you said, we had a ton of callouts, but we have a storm mode, which basically shortens the time with the same treatment, but it shortens it to get the waters through the plant faster and out the other end. So that was upgraded in SCADA, which seemed to work very well over the weekend. So just the desert.
Okay, so we're already seeing benefit from that cost.
Yeah, and I think the only thing after this is once the new reservoir come out, then we paint. But that's already included in the cost, that should already be a part, that's already part of the spec, so after this, we should be good for SCADA for a while.
Yeah, so SCADA will always have little glitches here and there, that'll have to be worked on, but that'll just be general budgeted maintenance costs that happen. But as far as uh the water side is getting done currently, so it should be done within another month or two. So they're working on that, and then, yes, it will be tied into that system that's being installed currently. Uh for the wastewater facilities plan, um me and Gordon are working on that. We're still in the beginning stages of it. I have to give him some data, unfortunately. Historically, the wastewater plant had bad data because the flowing curves were not correct. And that throws off all calculations of all data, so that's a big issue, but uh we're working through that right now. But yes, we're in the beginning stages of that. Um we're not too far into it yet. Um and the plant headworks, unfortunately, we're gonna have to hold off on that one. I just got bids back on a unit and install engineering cost and uh the ARPA money that we have budgeted is not enough to proceed to go out to budget.
Okay, so number fourteen is actually turning to red?
Yes. Yes, that was just found out earlier.
And so.
Uh so we're looking at a minimum of about another hundred to two hundred thousand.
So we need double.
So one of the things, like I mentioned, we've been very cost-conscious uh with the big projects this year. I think the only thing that's probably gonna get as close as it can to the uh budgeted amount is probably gonna be the water meters and probably the city hall roof repair. Everything else has been, was actually budgeted higher than expected. Um but with the savings on the reservoir, because we have those grants, I would try to use the ARPA last. And then in addition to the ARPA money that we have here, that may, we may be able to prioritize something going into the next fiscal year um with that money.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, so if number fourteen is red and we have to spend those ARPA.
Yeah, which means that, I mean, we we could talk in the bigger discussions for next year, but I mean, if we don't, I mean, let me, let me just have a second. We have on the reservoir, we have hundred twenty-five thousand on ARPA and the headworks have another two-twenty. So let's say that's three, let's say three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um if we don't, I mean, even if we tap into, say, twenty-five to thirty of that ARPA, the the reservoir is the key, because I think we can expend most of those funds before we get into ARPA money, cause we're wrong at any time. Um and so, I mean, if we have here at fifty thousand dollars, I mean, that can be a big project. I know we we've talked about what it looks like for bridge and whatnot. I don't wanna say anything. But I think we we have some extra money that needs to be spent. So we put the headworks, we we can continue on with that. But if there's another priority that we think that we wanna move towards, or at least.
So I I wanna make sure I'm following you. So in number two, you're thinking that we might not even touch those ARPA funds with the reservoir? Possible?
That that's gonna be the last place we're gonna expend money from, because we, so the first thing we're expending money from is gonna be the Yandel County grant.
Yeah.
And then the state of Oregon grant, and then the water SDCs.
Okay.
And then ARPA finally, and I think ARPA.
So then if we're not touching those ARPA funds and we have the two-twenty for the ARPA funds from fourteen, you're saying there's a possibility that we're gonna.
But we always have to be be mindful of the head, eventually the headworks is gonna have to be.
Well, that's where I guess my question is, is if we end up not using it on number two, could we use it?
What was the deadline on the ARPA funds?
Our break's been assured, the the projects have to be approved by December thirty-first, twenty-four. And then it has to be expended by December thirty-first, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay.
So um we'll we'll have to have a plan to spend it by next December. This time next year, we have to have all our ARPA money expended. And I mean, we're trying to spend the money on some of these projects and spending all of it, which is good. But we have, I think that's something that uh staff and I will bring to you at the next, uh at the at the first budget discussions, or even with the council uh the first part of the year next year.
Can you, can you at the beginning part of the year at least just walk us through as council? You know, before the budget meeting?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We had, we had discussed doing more regular budget meetings than just two in April, so that's something we can figure out too.
Okay.
This may be a dumb question, but remind me what ARPA stands for?
American Rescue Plan Act.
Okay.
Yeah, so one of the code, uh, yeah, legislations from the federal government.
And I just wanted to clarify, on the screen upgrade, um that money, if you replace the screen, is gonna look for, it's like that will be beneficial in the terms of upgrading facilities, so we've got a phone stuff later on also. So it's not gonna be like, oh, in five years, we're gonna upgrade a facility and that's no longer usable. And that's not gonna be the case, that that's still gonna be a viable new piece of people. Got more of that.
That's good info, thank you.
I did a printout, a bunch of copies. I can email anybody who needs, everybody actually lost a hard copy of the year-to-date. I have about five or six copies here. Um so um regarding next year, um we've, we've talked a little bit, I know um when talking Terry Park um with Council Gilgan last week, we kind of talked, oh, a few weeks ago, we talked about Bridge Street and and maybe looking at a more efficient way to do puddle repair. So um I've kind of all involved, Council Gilgan, he'll be a part of the demo um for that machine. Uh we'll we'll hopefully try to get something soon.
He asked me, he didn't tell me.
Oh wait, what are we now, transportation?
So um once I get the date for that demo, I'm gonna send it out to other members of the budget committee and city council to see if they wanna be, it'll be via Zoom. Um they're, I think, in Texas, yes, and um.
No field trip?
No, no field trip. Um I think the rough cost is about ninety thousand dollars, which I know is kind of scary. Um but looking at what I've got, wanted to pass um in a previous employment, and looking at some of the sample videos, I think this can kind of abate some of the cold patching shit that we have. It'll be a bit more professional cut, it'll be a little cleaner. Um it'll also take more man time and and training time, but I think this may be able to help us around town.
Any other towns near us have something comparable?
I think Carlton, was it Carlton who have one or Sheridan? Um, I think I mentioned one, one.
Yeah, I don't know exactly the small town. I know other towns do have different styles of things.
Sherwood has.
Yeah, and I have one in Harrington. I mean, we we want to use one forty-five thousand, you know, but we mean.
And there's, there's an intercity co-op that sells used equipment back and forth as well.
Uh I guess this is a bigger.
Do you have that contact info?
No, I I can get it.
Okay.
And can we rent it out to the other towns?
So um so I think that's one thing we're kind of looking at next year.
Can I make a note on that as well, since we discussed that? My my whole thought on that was I think that some of the streets that need to be repaired should have never gotten that bad.
Correct.
But because we're in a position where to do real repairs, we had to bring out third-party contractors to do a lot of that. I think we can just stay on top of maintenance a lot better if we do that in-house, and perhaps over time, after, you know, you spread out the cost of that equipment over the amount of years you can use it, perhaps save money over spending on contractors.
If you have someone skilled that can use it.
Right, and and the other thing, you know, we discussed this briefly, and I, and this isn't, you know, this isn't our role as council, this is his role within employment. But, you know, we discussed briefly the idea of, well, most of that stuff happens in the summer. Maybe it's a matter of hiring some college kids for seasonal work. It, we'll just have to figure out where that, where that all fits in.
So um once I get that, I'll send out a demo. I'm, I think we said the second half of January, right? Second half of January. Um so that's something we'll be looking at. Um we'll be also looking at some other, uh we'll probably be bringing additional street projects. Um few all looking at the uh the street assessment list. If there's anything, cause we can't give deliverables tonight, this is the city council meeting with the budget committee. But I don't mind, I don't mind doing legwork. If there's something that you see as a a project that you wanna do or you wanna see, reach out to me. I would, I I would, I would hate to say, hey, we talk in March or April, and then we're scratching to get some of these bigger items, some things that we may not know about that you're thinking of, that you're you're members of the budget committee. So if you see something in January, just email me. Hey, what does this look like? What does this look like? Or can you put this into the draft, and if it's something reasonable, I can say, hey, um you know, budget committee member Harper approached this. Is this something we wanna do? Like how uh uh committee member uh Newman mentioned about that pedestrian crossing. That's something I really wanna see forward. So it was discussed, and it was okay, we still wanna keep this in there. So there's things that I think if we, um ahead of the next meetings, you say, hey, let's look at this, let's look at this, outside of the city council meeting. It'll probably make the, our second kind together a little bit more smoother.
And you want us to share those outside of that, not now?
Yeah, yeah, if you're just thinking, hey, what does this look like? Or hey, Brandon, give me a, what does this look like? What is this feasible? Is this actual something that we can do? That's what I'm here for. It can be at any time. So the Elcat thing came out of uh Ms. Marilyn and and you and I talking about, hey, how can we just make this easier for the Elcat stuff on the, the, you know, again, that was our small budget item, but it was, we talked about how we can make that easier for you all. So so there's that.
I guess what I'm asking is, is are we allowed to say it right now?
I mean, yeah, you, I mean, you can't say, Brandon, you're gonna do this, but if you're thinking of some things.
I'm just curious on our radar if the money's there to purchase property, if it comes available on Third Street. I don't know, whether we want to or not, I just don't even know if it's in our.
Yeah, I mean, that that's what discussed with member of the governing body a few weeks ago as well. Um.
Yeah, I don't even know if there's a reason, and I just don't even know if it's.
Yeah, I mean, not that it's, I mean, you can do whatever you want. Um but I also gotta think, we gotta look at, I mean, you know, we have to look at, you know, the city hall building fund and some of the funds that we have SDCs and see what we can do. Um but I mean, depending on the overall plan of things, we could, I mean, but that'd be.
I don't know if I would even want to. I just was curious if we even.
We're buying some land for split one ways.
Right.
I just know that there's a tear down building that's on sale on the market.
But one, one additional thing we'll have to think about, um is another conversation about water rates. I know last year, well, this current year, we scaled it back to last year, but I think as part of the plan, Council Gogan had worked up. Um there was, I think, four percent, like, minimal increase, and then there's also the, I think it's gonna be a dollar increase to the um the, yes, the more of the surcharges and.
Wait, that was, that's the first time I've hearing of that, that's.
No, no, no.
That was discussed in the meeting.
Yeah.
It would, it wouldn't fluctuate. I think the most it would.
Like a dollar.
Okay.
Yeah, so we had sixteen dollars.
Because those, those debt payment, uh the debt payments we make, they're not, they're not, it's not like a mortgage, it's just the same every month, thirty years where it's higher. But when divided among the houses, yeah, I think it was like a dollar forty-seven, that's the highest it could go.
Yeah, this year we're trying to at least pass some of that, so the 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 two biggest payments, it's 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 a lighter impact. So um so keep that in mind. That'll be something we'll have to talk about, and then also we put it to bed, um the sewer rate study. Um talked to DEQ last week on some grant stuff. Probably in the next three or four years, they're probably gonna say, hey, like, if we're looking at doing a wastewater expansion, we're gonna have to look at those rates. Um a city in Oregon just have this, are are gonna see the rates go up like seventy-five percent on sewer. So I don't, that's something we have to look at.
It would go up pounds?
No, no, I'm saying a city in Oregon had to bump up their sewer rate seventy-five percent because there was no sustaining uh sustainable income coming in to to keep that wastewater fund solvent. So the DEQ would just say, hey, when we look at your portfolio for grants and loans, they need to see how sustainable the system is without these grants. So like when I was in Harrington, we had to do, we we, they had um got a, they had gotten a water, water plant done, but they had no way to pay for it. But they, they did a three-point-five percent increase in perpetu-in perpetuity. So it's gonna go twenty-five years every year, three-point-five, because they bought this wastewater plant. State came in after I got there and they said, hey, how are you gonna pay for this? Oh, there was no plan to pay for it, so that they pretty much forced our hand. Unless you're gonna fall back on this debt, you gotta every year three-point-five percent at least. So there's, you know, I see, foresee that coming in the next year or two, but as we start looking at the sewer expansion, there's, the sewer rates are gonna have to go up eventually.
So in order to apply for grants, we have to have a certain rate, don't we?
Yes, we have to, we have to be a sustainable rate for the fund, so if we didn't have the grant and we had to pay for the um any construction, we can fall back on that, so.
Yeah, so like there's another city in town, I don't know if it's the same one you're talking about, but they had, they just did a whole big sewer thing, and they did a lot of grant money, dropped it from like ten million to like two point something to take to the voters.
Yeah.
And they're now also struggling with needing to show that without that grant money, it's still sustainable.
Yeah.
And my, my recollection of the council, and I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to speak about future policy, just my recollection of what occurred was it wasn't an objection to the rate study as much as the provider.
Correct. So, so.
A hundred and ten percent.
Yeah, so it wasn't that council was saying we don't wanna have a rate study, we're saying at this point, not from the same company at this company.
Which was the company that.
Companies that provide that.
I have a question.
We just knew it had to be immediately decided.
Yeah, yeah, that's why.
The check was being printed, well, not being printed, but.
Outside of town, is that helping on the situation with the water, or is it causing more problems?
The building over at Meadowbrook? Um well, I mean, the the expansion of water service that was provided in uh the McWater Light, that's given, I mean, we're 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 good to go, and I think even with the wastewater side, I think with some of the improvements that we've done, we're able to, the the flow, the high flows haven't been, I'm saying anything out, I'm not a, I'm not a wastewater person, but I know there was a lot of concerns on the wastewater side with this project would do, and I think I was told different numbers in the transition than I think was accurately being reported from DEQ and whatnot. They told us last week, I think they said like six thousand, right, in that meeting? Or was that, or was that something else that I was off on? Cause we're gonna talk about the fifty-five-hundred number.
Yeah, so, well, I've, I've looked at what the pipes design flow is and peak flows and like average summertime flows. Average summertime flows were far below uh what we actually are designed for. Uh we're about half in the summertime, but during winter time with IONI, so water getting into the system. Um is, uh, we're not meeting the peak design, we're still running about half of peak design flow, but realistically, the facility plant needs peak design flow without violations.
Without what?
Without violations currently.
Okay.
With the operating the facility, it won't be possible to hit two million gallons a day, which is what the facility's designed for.
Yeah. Is there a way to lower that rate? I thought that's what part of the manhole repairs were for?
That has helped, but there is still IONI in the system that needs to be addressed. Uh for example, we have a issue where a contractor has previously hit our pipes, uh until when they were boring. Um and we have major IONI into one of our lift stations currently because of that. We have to get it fixed, we're gonna do it to the contractor that did with the video inspection and stuff.
Are they liable for that?
They should be, um, we gotta look. They should be, um we gotta look at everything, you know.
Well, they should have insurance for that.
But yes, they they most likely won't argue that it's very common during morning to hit.
Yeah.
Um yeah.
So so long, long-winded answer, yes, on the water side, but on the wastewater side, there's some concerns, but I think we're gonna work through that. I think the, and one of the biggest things is like um mentioned the I N I, I mean, normal, most cities our size should probably do. Ten a year, maybe, right? Depending on on how big the sewer system is.
Correct, yeah, I mean, I would think for the size of city that we are, eight uh manhole ceilings is very good. I mean, eight would have been a fantastic number, DEQ's eyes. Um we're supposed to also inspect manhole, I mean, uh lines and stuff, and we're supposed to get around the system every time. Uh that's just general senses and any side of the town, but eight for this size of town, like for example, I came from Woodburn. Um we that we we might resell eight, maybe in Woodburn substantially larger than the city.
And the manhole ceiling, so that's the that blue color that you guys painted in, right? Or like it, they cleaned it out and sealed.
Yeah, so it's actually a white color.
Oh, like the blue one they showed, okay.
I thought main lines were supposed to be inspected every three years, not five years.
Okay.
Uh. What was that, sorry?
I thought main lines were supposed to be inspected every three years, I just remembered dividing cities into thirds.
So uh that it all depends on the city, DEQ requires if they came in inspected or um information, it's within a rotation of a minimum. Minimum of every five years. They might to be done by every three years, but there's their minimum standard's five.
Okay.
Yeah.
So um to go back to what I said, if there's any uh anything you wanna talk about, anything for next year, uh please let me know, we're probably gonna start talking budget. I had I had to give the city council because our uh union, our C our new CBA deal is gonna be coming up here soon, right around the time of the fiscal year. So we're approving the, the council should be approving our contract and then the budget right around the same time, so we're we're gonna start working on that and um. I don't wanna have to do two budgets, so hopefully I can do one budget, you know, depending for the CBA and. Um that'll, you know, if there's any fluctuations, it'll be small minor adjustments. I mean, I've seen recently, I mean. Certain managers had to have three or four based on union negotiations, so hopefully that won't be the case. I think we've had good um good success in the past with that. Um so we'll be working on the budget here probably starting in late January, early February, so um well, not not on your end. On the me and Chad's end and whatnot, so. So um.
You have Christmas to get it done.
I also will say, um I wanna uh thank our auditors, um there's a lot of cities, I don't know if you see mayor on your uh listserv. Because a lot of cities going through a lot of struggles with their audits and getting them in time, there's people back three, four, five years. So um we're we're looking to have our auditor to be able to give us up to the numbers, cause there's a lot of cities that don't, don't close out and mess up their budgets two or three years down the line. Cause they don't get accurate during closeouts, so we do have a great auditor, so um and uh so thank you, Jimmy, for working on that uh quickly and efficiently. So that's all I have. I know there was a discussion on setting dates and times, I did make a mistake, I forgot we wanted to be completely consistent with planning. With city council and budget committee for six thirty. I did the minimum requirement of two meeting suggestions, but I know there's been discussion on having another one of these. Towards the end of the year, I wanna make that a full-fledged budget meeting. I just need to know because those budget committee meetings. Since says deliverables and discussion, those actually have to be posted and and has to be a public um public posting part of that. So um we can do another work session before then like this, or we can have full-fledged additional budget committee meetings, that'll be up to the council. Um I did recommend some dates on the bottom of the agenda, which is going to be, that's when.
Fifteenth and twenty second at six thirty.
Yes, so it'd be at at least the fifteenth and the twenty-second, cause we need to have at least two meetings. So those are the minimum we have to have. So I would, if everybody's okay with that, we can schedule that, but if we want to have a third meeting. An official budget committee meeting, I'd like to get that on the schedule now, or we can do something like this before a city council meeting type of thing.
Of course, tax day.
It's an everyday tax day.
No, it's literally like tax day.
Do do folks, okay, so originally the the in the later part of Jim Drebin's uh time here. He had mentioned having meetings like this to keep the budget committee in the loop on where things are, is it something people are finding productive?
I do, I think so.
I found this meeting tonight productive compared to trying to play catch-up as we're going into. The budget, like.
And that makes.
Right, so. So is there something folks want to do a couple months ahead or a month ahead of the actual budget process time in April?
Well, that makes sense because some of the problems is like just coming to us at the budget can, the budget meeting is like, oh, this is an idea, this is an idea. But a week isn't enough time to figure things out, so like if there's big projects or. Projects that you see coming that we need, like I think it'd be good to have that quick meeting in advance to have those discussions.
Especially if it's something that, you know, the answer is like, well, that's gonna have to go before council, to have a work session at least, you know, with enough time that if.
Cause like with the ARPA funds right now.
Yeah, to be able for, you know, to go to council before these two meetings.
Yeah, we could might be applying something to wrap our head around for that. If if we don't wanna go this way, here's something else we can.
That's my point, yeah, like those ideas going now in advance.
So is that. What what would you all like?
Well, what what do you think is appropriate? Cause you're the one who does the budget.
What what what's okay for you? You got to probably have your data or three quarter of your data.
That's why I'm asking you guys.
March, mid-March?
Let's see, I'll maybe back for maybe my sabbatical and just kidding.
So I think Brandon's sure knew enough, you had a very concern that you were leaving on a sabbatical.
I I actually dreamed.
Put those things in every.
It's in the budget.
Right.
Um I mean, if you guys, uh cause this was like four months, we wanna do another four months, that would be through February, so if we have one in March. And then that would be like a month before the actual budget meeting.
Yeah, that gives us a chance to chew on ideas.
Can we do it in March before the March council meeting?
So like a Thursday, like an hour before, so a five-thirty meeting?
No, I can't do five-thirty, Brandon.
No, I think she meant just on date.
Oh, okay, okay, I got you.
Yeah, no.
I I was, I thought I took it the same way you did.
Sorry, no, earlier in the month.
Okay, so I mean, have the March meeting, March fourteenth, you wanna do like another six-thirty meeting on the the thirteenth? Cause Jamie will be here already, cause she works three and who who went in her last day. So we can do the thirteenth?
I'm sorry.
No, it's the whole of the week.
So I would recommend if we do.
Baffled, it sits for last day.
I would recommend in that next one, because of those ideas that are gonna be floating around, we do it like a week. A week before the Monday to give you time to prep the packet.
That's true, the later in the March we go, the the last time before the council.
Mark, like March six?
When's the? What is that, we say?
That'll be.
November, December, January.
February.
Well, the January would be six months, right? Oh, no, oh, nevermind, we wanted February, can you turn something over in a week? Would that that probably be too hard, right?
Uh well, I mean, it wouldn't be completely accurate because I wouldn't have like the base statement, everything you do, all of February's reconciliation. So no, it it would be close, I mean, it would have like the AP stuff and payroll, but there's, it's not gonna be exact.
What if it's like the eleven?
But may I object, is the concern with the thirteenth, the turnar- the turnaround time for the council meeting on the fourteenth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, because this will be a budget, I mean, the the turnaround time I think we should be concerned about is the turnaround time for the April budget meetings.
And the next one will be just like this again? Well, like, hey, here's where we're at with the CIP, here's what we kinda thought of, you wanna go that?
I think it's very unlikely that the March council meeting will have these particular items on it. We usually do budget meetings in April and then the actual budget approval closer to June. So I don't think the stuff that we talk about in the next budget meeting will directly implicate the.
I just want to make sure it's enough time that if.
And obviously, I mean, we have, we have two council meetings before that, so obviously if something comes up, okay, I can.
Okay, whatever's best that you think.
I think that March thirteenth is probably the best day if you wanna have the most accurate numbers.
I think that's fine.
At six thirty?
Yes.
Well, even the thirteenth, it there still is a probably a high likelihood that. There there won't be all of the right.
Well, we all need all the exact numbers, it's the idea, and then having the ideas of like, hey, these projects are important.
I think you guys are probably wanting more like, hey, this is a fund we're concerned about.
Yes.
It's not necessary, it's not worried about like.
Yeah.
It was great, it doesn't have to be exact, but like, you know, here's where we're in December, where are we going to be? Yeah.
Are we over, are we under?
So March thirteenth at six thirty.
Yeah, okay.
Now, are we? Are we thinking April twenty-sixth, I mean, April fifteenth and twenty-second are gonna be okay?
No, I was just saying.
Cause normally we do the last two Mondays of April, we bumped it back in case you wanted, there was any fourth, third meeting. Just not to correct my boss, but we actually are only required to have one meeting. You can do. The budget presentation and the hearing and everything in one meeting.
Yeah, that never goes good.
So no, but I'm just saying, it's not, we don't, so there's no requirement to have two, but if you have two, it just.
I mean, I guess six thirty, your taxes should be in anyway, so.
Ours is already in and spent.
Well, yeah.
Control without tax folks, you know.
I mean, let's start.
I was, I'm actually good, corporate taxes in March, we're actually fine.
Fifteenth.
Yep.
Or seventeen, right?
And then spring break right after that.
Yeah, so that's fine.
Okay, so clarify for the record, we will do another one of these special work sessions on March thirteenth. At six thirty, and then we are gonna plan to have the two committee meetings. On the fifteenth and the twenty-second of April at six thirty.
Correct.
When I see a lap.
Okay.
Yeah, cause instead I picked to have meetings the two days before the corporate tax.
That's what I just pointed out.
Okay, so anything else with four? Low emotion.
I just wanted to say thank you.
Motion on the table.
No, no, please, no, you even.
Okay, I just want to say. To the council uh for the way, I don't know if I got a chance to say that, for the way you guys handled the water crisis. I mean, it just, it really uh, you know, being a long-time resident here, I know that water is a, it's a. Big issue, and so I just felt like you guys did a really great job diffusing a situation that could have become pretty hostile. And um just the solution and the willingness to work with the residents, and I just really appreciate that.
And I will just repeat every chance that I have. A lot of people came to me because they're like, well, how did you know? Cause I voted against it back then, but honestly, none of the counselors who are currently on or who were on before. Would have voted in favor for that. Nobody wanted that to happen.
I appreciate that, as budget members, you guys didn't just jump ship and be like, oh.
No, she showed up with her and her husband, and they were supportive and.
Yeah, no, and I mean, tonight, she, you know, like that. He rode out that storm with us, yeah.
I think Lee is to be congratulated for coming up with a solution, because it was simple and I think people could understand it.
Right.
I will say Brandon had a lot to do with that, Brandon and I worked together.
But it was simple.
Yeah, that was a lot.
That's the thing, I think that there's a lot that was going on, not behind closed doors, but behind scenes individually that. I think as council and even budget members bringing up some questions or recollections of things that were said, I think it was everyone. Was doing what they needed to do.
It's a learning moment, so if anything were to happen again, it's just one of those things, you know, that's, you know, most of the things move forward, you know.
So, back to the motion that. Yeah, so, all in favor of adjourning this meeting? Okay, meeting adjourned. I don't know, but I know.
You'll always be mad at me for not taking. I get like.
Are you okay?
Like, let's have it at our house.